All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're back. I'm calling to order the annual school district meeting and budget hearing. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm opening nominations for election of a chairperson for the annual meeting.
I'll nominate Jim to be the chairperson.
A second.
You're the president.
I thought I was gonna hand it off to somebody, I guess not, let me see.
Why you get the big box?
Yeah, exactly. No more comments. All right. I did get a second?
Yeah.
Already there, okay, good. I'm seeking a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. I am asking for, well, we've already asked for the vote, well, I better say this, I am asking for the vote on motion for Jim as chairperson.
So moved.
Aye, and we already got our first and a second. Just a vote. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. I am going to designate that Cassie Peck as our secretary for this annual meeting. Cassie? And I think we all approve of that, no motion needed. The chair designates Cassie and Josh Vigut to assist in the voting process and to tally votes at this meeting if necessary. Josh, you've been identified, thank you. All right. The 29th annual meeting minutes that are included in the handout materials will be entered into record.
It's actually the 30th.
Okay. All right, continuing on. Let me see. I read through all of this, having a feeling that you were gonna do that, Lance, so. Okay, treasurer's report. Treasurer John Krescher will now read the treasurer's report, which includes the general checking account for the school district.
All right.
Let's go ahead and read the backup. You went over something.
Did I?
My part is very short, so. All right, beginning, this is the treasurer's report, beginning cash balance and investments July 1st, 2022, of $36,116,991.05. Receipts of $140,963,969.57. Disbursements of $142,723,729.03. And ending cash balance and investments, June 30th, 2023, of $34,357,231.59. This includes Fund 10, Fund 21, Fund 27, Fund 29, Fund 50, and Fund 80. Okay, and that's the treasurer's report.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate that. Dr. Hiltz will give a brief state of the district presentation.
Thank you. I don't normally do this, but there is so much going on, and this was some information that we shared with different employee groups at the beginning of the school year, so I thought that people on the board and folks watching might be interested. If you could advance, Cassie. So, the main theme here is there is a lot going on. Keep going. So, we are recreating a newcomer center. Wausau used to have one, when we, back in the 70s, 80s. As you might recall, we have, we're getting more and more refugee students. We have, is it about 70 refugee students, Kale? As well as immigrant students, and so they come to us with a wide variety of school experiences, or lack thereof, and so it puts a stress on the students, also puts a stress on our staff. So, Mrs. Libby White and Mrs. Shannon Charbonneau are recreating a newcomer center where students who come into the district in that status can bolster their skills, kind of get used to school before we enroll them in a regular classroom, so we're excited about that. In the previous meeting, we talked about independent learning days, we're very grateful to the board for approving these opportunities for our teachers to have some time to do some collaborative learning. And so, so that's an exciting piece. Another one, the D.C. Everest School District and the Wausau School District are going to do a first, in my understanding, the first joint professional development day on October 26th. This will be focused on student mental health. All of the secondary staff will be on one campus, all of the elementary staff from the two districts will be on another campus, and it'll be a workshop format where the staff can choose various presenters, school-based and community-based presenters, all centered around student mental health. A few weeks ago, we did a board workshop on academic programming, so we wanted to share some of the, at least, you know, the district achievement data that we had shared then. We've got some positive trends. Here is our K-5 math trend, so this is all students in grades K through 5, from the fall of '21 to the spring of '23. This uses our iReady diagnostic, which assesses kids' math skills, so we're excited to see that, and you'll see a similar trend in our reading. We have a variety of assessments in reading, and so this is a combination, but again, that positive trend from fall, from '21 to '23. Middle school, this again is the iReady diagnostic, this is math, again, some good trends across a couple of years, and then in ELA, not as strong, but again, we're, one thing to remind people is that as students go from 6th grade to 7th grade to 8th grade, the rigor of these assessments increases, so a flat trend is actually, means those same percentage of students are meeting their benchmarks. ACT data, very encouraging, you see three years of ACT data, this is for both schools. On the far left is our composite, our overall score, and then they're broken down by the different content areas, so again, all positive data there. You might recall, we have a referendum going on. This is a picture from John Muir, the start of mission going on there, but obviously, we've just completed projects at Stettin, at Riverview, at South Mountain, we're breaking ground on Wausau West, and what's the next slide, Cassie? Oh, this is a bunch of images from a number of projects. The one in the upper left and the lower right are both the Environmental Learning Center, I think we have a separate slide for that one, yes. Go to the next one, would you, oh, I should, sorry, back up. So, one more, ahead. Just, so that's the exterior. It does have some environmental features, a little bit of solar I see being installed here, it looks better than that picture, if you go to the next one, Cassie. We're actually going to hold our November school board meeting at the Environmental Learning Center, so everybody can get a look at it, and after that board meeting, we'll have a community open house. It is a gorgeous facility, we're excited about what the kids and the staff are going to experience at our school forest. Restructuring, go on there, so, always good to remind us of the why, and we said it in our first meeting, this is about making improved experiences for students, improved supports for staff. You can see the list there, but we've been talking about that for a while, if you go ahead, Cassie. This was something that people enjoyed seeing. When the board approved the restructure back in February, we created a strategic, a two-year strategic plan to get this done. We did it with the tools we had available, which was basically a spreadsheet. I was fortunate to have a connection with someone from Green Heck, and that person, I was talking to them about our effort and our next steps, and she offered the services of their project managers. So, she introduced me to one of them, we met, I showed her what we were doing, she said, "That's good, I can help you make it better." And so, obviously, we are, we accept, you know, help, and so our whole district-level team met for two days with two to three project managers. We shifted our project management tool from a spreadsheet to something called RIC. Each, and what you're looking at here is basically a, there's a series of milestones with a number of tasks that have to be completed. Every few weeks, the team gets together, we check, this is a Gantt chart version, we check our progress, make sure that we're on schedule. Each team, when there's about 18, each team has their own page, just like this, the one you're looking at here is, I can't read from here. Cultures and, oh, so the mascot's on the top, and on the bottom is a series, we're trying to plan some events for the schools that are being merged together, so for students, for staff, for families, so they can start to come together before the schools actually merge, so. That's just one example of a very, very long strategic plan that has about 400 to-do items on there over the next two years. So, this past summer, there was a number of teams that got together, including secondary curriculum, the middle school schedule, the junior high school concept, that team got together, athletics and branding, childcare and 4K, and alt ed, those were all meeting this summer, those are the most time-sensitive, and other teams build on the work of these teams. So, next steps, on Friday, all of the secondary teachers will be getting together to review the work that was done this summer on the 512 scope and sequence. We'll take that feedback and then continue that work in all the content areas. In October, we're going to bring a middle school schedule proposal to the board, as well as a junior high schedule, I believe. We continue to coordinate our referendum and restructuring efforts, we'll be bringing a childcare business plan, we're continuing to work with the YMCA, they're excited about the possibility, as are we. We talked about those shared events for the merging schools, the high school mascot options, we're getting really good engagement there, we are, focus group is scheduled for October. We're starting to look at elementary schedule options, and of course, the red granite charter school is scheduled to start up in 2024, pending the approval of their grant, so that's some exciting things going on as well. Two others that are very high interest but not being worked on right now is staffing and transportation, so we wanted to let the staff know, we did an initial staffing survey, we'll do another one next year to finalize staffing decisions, and of course, transportation, you know, we'll be doing, we won't do routes till 2025, other things like the, we were talking about, you know, shuttles and things like that for, to support programming, that will all be developed in the next year. And that's the briefest summary I could make for what's going on in the district, so thank you for that time. I'll ask if there's any questions.
Any questions? No?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
About the newcomer center?
Yeah.
Is that up and running at John Marshall now?
It is not, it will be running later this fall, or early winter, do you have a timeline on that?
Second semester is the plan right now, staff are working in developing programming so that they can receive students as they come in.
Thank you.
Good question.
Second quarter, second quarter, not semester, I'm sorry.
Sumner. Noel Torson will now read the Other Post-Employment Benefits Report.
The Other Post-Employment Benefits Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Cash balance was $3,794,915.33. Thus, our returns were $169,860.21, and you can see they're broken down by dividends, unrealized gains and losses, long-term realized loss, and fees, and then total credit disbursements for the fiscal year were $2,228,796.65. We fund that whole amount plus 5% into the trust to meet DPI requirements, so if you have any questions, I can answer.
I don't think so, well, thank you, thank you, Noel. Now, we have the budget hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 budget, Josh will give us a report.
So, we'll run through some budget information, and then you'll actually go through the resolutions, and stop me anywhere you have questions. So, a brief overview of the timeline, you started working on the budget, adopted the initial budget in May, worked on throughout the summer. Today, we are going to have the annual meeting and adopt the budget, or have the annual meeting, and then you will adopt the final budget at the October 23rd meeting. Any questions on timeline? All right, I know some of you have seen this slide a lot of times, I stole it from my predecessor, so. The revenue limit, so school funding, simplified, the full revenue limit is our operating budget, and how is that funded? So, a chunk of it is general state aid, and a chunk of it comes from property tax levy. And so, our total revenue limit, you know, per pupil, this year, we're looking at $12,081. Of that, estimated about $8,700 from state aid, $3,200 from tax levy. So, just explaining the change in the revenue limit last year to this year, last year, the revenue per member was $11,121, we have $1 of recurring exemptions, and then, so we'll bring that down, we're kind of working left to right here, and then top to bottom. So, in addition to the base revenue per member, we did have in the state budget this year, in addition to the per pupil maximum revenue limit of $325, and then this year, we do also have non-recurring exemptions of $634, bringing us to that $12,081 mark. Any questions on that? A real quick overview of the last 15 years or so of revenue limit and categorical aid. This year, we did have that increase that I just mentioned of $325, which is a change from the previous two years where there was no increase, and then if you look back, 14, 15, 16, through 18, 19, no increase then either, so inflation has outpaced our revenue. And then, in previous years, something the state did, another lever they could pull, is per pupil categorical aid, which is based specifically on your per pupil enrollment, that's something they were doing for a while to help increase revenue for certain schools that don't get as much state aid. The last couple of years, they've seemed to move away from that, so there's no increase in that number this year. So, talking through, again, what's happening with the budget, and then a little bit about inflation. So, we do have the $325 increase per pupil this year, next year, and we'll see, determine how many years after that, then we did have the 2021 operating levy of $500 per pupil, but if we move down to the chart and we look at that compared to inflation over time, now this goes back to '06, '07, but you can see that inflation, that red line, has significantly outpaced our revenue, so what that means is all our expenses are significantly outpacing the money we have to pay for them. So, what do we still have coming up in the next month? We have to get our certified property values, that'll be beginning of October, final aid certification, then we have the third Friday pupil count certification, we've already done the count, but we're working through the certification process, and then vouchers. Touching a little more on inflation, the, just talking about where we are in terms of lagging behind inflation. In this year alone, we're $9,615,000 behind the inflationary pace, and if you look at this over time, over these 12 years shown, we're over, about $34 million behind, so that means our revenue has not kept pace in any way with our expenses. The chart on the bottom left is pegged to 2011, 2012, so that's, I think, the year of Act 10, so we had a significant decrease in revenue that year, that's why it's pegged to that, but it's still, inflation's far outpacing revenue. And then, the chart on the right is just this year, so we're seeing, we have that huge inflationary number last year, and you can see how far we are behind in terms of our revenues. Okay, talking about the tax levy a little bit, so again, we have the state aid amount, and then the general fund levy amounts we're talking about now, so we do have an estimate of the certified values per township and city, we received that August 1st, so we have an estimate of what the certified full value will be, about $5.6 billion. And then, we know, so that's on the left, and then if you look on the right, the bottom right, we do know what those levies will be, for the most part. What we don't know, the room's not booked, is that what the numbers will be in the individual townships per levy, so we don't know that yet, that's TBD, and again, the total levy's going up about 3.02%, so that's the number there on the bottom right, and again, we will adopt the levy October 23rd. So, the next couple of slides are statewide comparative slides, so we can see how we sit compared to other areas of the state, and this data is from '21, '22, this is the most recent data available, next year, we'll look at '22, '23. So, this, this first slide just shows in terms of how much aid do you get as a, as an area, essentially. You can see that the dark purple, those are areas with high property values, they get no aid, and then you have the dark green areas, they get significantly more aid, so we are a relatively, a higher aid district, but that puts us along with the majority of the state in terms of geography. So, this is a similar map, but it shows the amount of aid you get per, compared to your total operating budget, so you can see that we are in that, not darkest blue, but dark blue area of the map, and that means we have between 50 and 75% of our total operating revenue comes from state aid. And this last one's a little interesting, because this is the change in base revenue limit authority between '21, or 2021 and 21, '22, and you can see, we are in Marathon County, we are the dark green area, that's our district, so we actually, you know, we're among the districts with a positive change, and that's because of the referendum that you passed. Any questions on those statewide comparisons? Okay, so looking at the Fund 10 revenues specifically, if we're going to look, I'll do, I'll kind of jump from top to bottom, property tax last year, about $28.5 million, this year, we're looking at $24.4 million, and you can see it's a smaller percentage of the overall budget this year, the equalization aid is up about $6 million, $69 million compared to $63 million last year, other state aid, those are smaller buckets of state money that we get, and then that per pupil aid that we talked about. And then, the deductible receipts, so something I do want to call your attention to in this is, A, the increase in equalized aid, and then, B, that you'd see that the total revenues are up, you know, about $5 million, so it's up significantly, and that is due in large part to increased grants this year, we'll talk about that later. And we're looking at expenditures, same thing, so we're up significantly, almost $6 million in expenditures, up to $117 million, but the overall percentage of salary benefits, last year, we're at 78%, and this year, we're down to 76. That is a little misleading, because again, a huge part of the expenditure increase is in grant funding, so I'd imagine next year, when we're having this conversation, we'll be looking at moving back up to that 78 area. And as I touched on, estimated grant funding, we're looking at about $9.9 million in grant funding this year, a huge chunk of that is the remaining SIR funding, that has to be spent by September of 2024, so that means it pretty much has to be spent in this school year, and then obviously, there's other, you know, Carl Perkins, CTE, Title I, things like that, but the majority for this year is that SIR funding. So, phase two, energy efficiency, we have a phase two and phase three exemption here, this one will be retired after this year, so at a point in the past, before I came on board, the district had the option to take out loans for energy efficiency improvements, LED light bulbs, things like that, this is one of those loans, we'll make our final payment this year. And then, we have another one, pretty much a similar thing, but this one won't retire until after the 2026 levy, both were around $11.5 million. Our community service funds, that's our Fund 80, and that's used to fund things that are available to people, not just in the school district, but kind of community-wide, so what do we use that for? Our growing great minds program, so our, I don't want to say what, wraparound care, you know, before, after school, the planetarium at Wausau West, it's a community, a community has access to that. And then, our SRO program, we have a great partnership with the local police department, and training, and payment for these SROs is funded in part through this fund, and then adequate maintenance of buildings and grounds that are available for communities, some of this money is used for that. So, in summary, we're looking at a total tax levy of $662,200, which is the exact same as last year, we have about $540,000 in carryover for a total fund budget of about $1.2 million. The mill rate history, this graph goes back to, I think, '68, '69, but what we're really focusing on is these last 10 years or so, where you can see pretty steady, if slightly decreasing mill rates, and we will continue that trend this year. So, we'll run through a little bit about the specific levies, and then at the bottom, some of the gross mill rate, equalized value, things like that. General fund levy this year, about $24.4 million, last year, $28.5, so it's a decrease of, you know, over $4 million, 14%. The debt service fund, however, this year, about $24.6 million, last year was just around 19, so it's an increase of about, about $5.5 million, community service fund staying level. So, what that means in totality is an increase in the total levy by about 3.0, of about 3.02%, just as a reminder, I know we talked about this last meeting, but that matches as close as we know to our net new construction, so that means existing taxpayers' taxes should stay pretty even, and that, that 3.02% will be a burden of the new development. So, talking about the total levy for this year, it's up 3.02%, just like we talked about, equalized value is up almost $500 million, but we talked last meeting, it's important to remember that compared to the rest of the state, ours did not go up as much, that's why we're receiving more state aid this year. And then, the gross mill rate, so that's, you know, tax on $1,000 of equalized value, this year, $8.83, last year, $9.36, so down 53 cents year over year. And a little more detail on that mill rate, so we have last year's mill rate up top, this year's, this year's mill rate on the bottom, and so we have the increase in revenue limit, that increases the mill rate, increase in debt service payment, that would increase the mill rate, but we also have an increase in aid, but that impacts the mill rate the other direction, so that brings the mill rate down, and then we have that increase in property values, property values go up, levy stays about the same, mill rate comes down, that gives you, should say, 23, 24, proposed mill rate of $8.83. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to thank the business office, Noel Torson, Jen Bonkey for their work on this, and of course, reliant on my predecessor, Bob, as well, so.
So, that means next year, you will be in total control, right?
That's right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vigut, appreciate that. There is no old business. I'm seeking a motion on each of the following eight resolutions, so I'm going to read them individually. Tax levy for general fund and community service fund includes sites, buildings, maintenance, and community activities. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
At the amount of $20,000. At the amount of twenty-four million, four seventeen, let me say it correctly, twenty-four million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-nine dollars be adopted as the tax levy for the general fund and six hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred dollars for the community service fund for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school fiscal year. I'll take a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tax levy for debt service fund includes all long-term debt. Motion, I need a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
That the amount of twenty-four million, six hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars be adopted as the tax levy for the debt service funds for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school fiscal year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next motion. Uh, school lunches, I need a motion by?
Take the motion.
Second.
To furnish school lunches to the students of the school district and appropriate funds for that purpose, the school lunch program is self-funded through sales of tickets and federal state subsidies and is accounted for in Fund Fifty. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next motion.
I move to authorize the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling in the performance of movies.
Motion?
We got it.
Okay, we got it both, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next motion.
I move that the school board annual salaries be established at three thousand, one hundred dollars, so the funding will be under the Board of School Fiscal Year.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motioning authorized resolution regarding continuing authorization for the Board of Education to lease suitable buildings and/or land for school sites. Seeking a motion?
So moved.
Eight percent to section one twenty point ten-five of the Wisconsin statutes, that the Board of Education be granted authority through the time of the next annual meeting to lease suitable buildings and/or land for school sites. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeking a motion to authorize resolution regarding continuing authorization for the Board of Education to convey partial interest in real estate?
So moved.
Second.
Present to the section one twenty point ten-twelve of the Wisconsin statutes, that the Board of Education be granted authority through the time of the next annual meeting to convey small parcels and/or easements to, in school lands to governmental authorities or public utilities, under the circumstances in which property belonging to the school district is not needed for school purposes and in which the value of the consent consideration to be received in exchange for an easement does not exceed twenty thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeking a motion for twenty twenty-four annual meeting?
So moved.
Present to section one twenty point zero eight, one A of the Wisconsin statute, authorize the Board of Education to establish the date and time of the twenty twenty-four annual meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I am seeking a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I am calling the Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three special meeting to order. Agenda item two, approve consent agenda, appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves, absences, retirements. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item three, to approve the school girls' golf co-op. Uh, Wausau East AD Kurt Van der Hoogel will present the East-West Girls Golf Co-op Agreement for Approval.
And Mr. Van der Hoogel was not able to be here. I will tell you what he shared with me. So the girls' golf team is entering their fourth year as a co-op comprised of East and West. Uh, through those years, the participation numbers have stayed consistent with the co-op allowing growth and skill development at the JV level and a competitive varsity squad who are crowned twenty twenty-three champs in the Wisconsin Valley Conference. Uh, shout out to Talia Schwinn, anybody help me, Schlind, Schlindwein? Thank you, yes. Uh, and he's a student who is awarded Conference Player of the Year. We ask the Board to consider the renewal of the girls' golf co-op for twenty-four, twenty-five, as it will continue to increase and support a diverse set, uh, set of offerings and instill unification for our scholar athletes to participate in.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.